We started the meeting, we had a workshop that ran over a little bit. If we could call the meeting to order with a roll call, please.
President Demos.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Kenwood.
Here.
Trustee Lattisak.
Here.
Trustee McGinley.
Here.
Trustee O'Shea.
Here.
Trustee Sonnack.
Here.
If trustee-elect Pride could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is audience participation. This is a point where someone can speak about any item that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Catherine, how many people do we have signed up?
We don't have anyone.
I think we have.
Do we? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you'd signed up. Are you Diana?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, I thought you signed up for the Village Newsletter. Oh, did you see? Okay. Well, apparently we have Ms...
Well, we'll provide both.
Apparently Ms. Diana Martinez would like to...
I did have a discussion with Diana, and she is representing a group, so we're going to allow her a little more time and flexibility. Thank you. I'll watch the time, Catherine.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm not going to take a lot of time. I wanted to thank you, President Demos, for reaching out and having a conversation and opening the door to come to some common ground. I'm speaking on behalf of many of my neighbors today who are at a District 41 board meeting right now. You know, this is what I think our biggest problem is, is perspective. And it hit me when I listened to your attorney Greg Matthews speak. And, you know, he pointed out points of how it does conform to use. And I can, you know, look at this and say, "Well, here are points that I don't think it does conform to use," you know? So I think we have a perspective issue. And you see three, and we see four, but the difference is it's our homes. And there's some things we found out since. We found out that if we were to try to sell our homes, and quite frankly, let's be honest, you know, some of those homes are the smaller homes, right? They're not eligible for VHA loans, they're not eligible for FHA loans, which will make it harder to resell our homes because of the storage tank proximity. They're not insurable. We know our insurance rates will go up because of the amount of tanks in the ground. It's scary, you know? And a lot of people say, "Well, that's nonsense. There was a gas station there before." And there was a gas station there before, but it was a very small gas station. It was a very different gas station. And the reality is, it did not go on to two other lots of land that were always residential for Glen Allen's history. We're setting a precedent by putting a 12-pump gas station in people's backyards. That's a fact. That's not made up. And it's a very different story to me, because I live there. And it's scary, and it's scary to Karen, who's an organic gardener, who doesn't even like it when I blacktop my driveway or seal coat it, because she doesn't like the fumes in her organic garden, so I don't do it that often. You know, there's issues. She's in her garden 24/7. It's rough for us to imagine an 11-foot plane difference with a 17-foot canopy on top, lit up all night long, that's 20 feet from our windows, you know, or from our backyards. It's a lot to expect. So we're going to explore the options we have. We noticed that there is opportunities for conditions to the special use. We have a meeting with Mr. Franz tomorrow to start those conversations. I talked to Stacy today and said, "Can we try to set something up?" We haven't seen the back drawings of how this 20-foot could possibly be maintained because of the elevation difference. I've looked at it 1,000 times. Joe Abel's looked at it 1,000 times. I don't know how you can set a fence up to something that's 11-foot down. I just don't know what it's going to get attached to. We're hoping for sound attenuation fencing, because we don't want to listen to people on speakers all night, you know, because they lock up the store, right? And then they speak through the speaker. "I want a six-pack. I want a pack of cigarettes." And they speak through the microphones and the plated glass. So we'd like to see drawings for the back of the retention pond. There's been no drawings of that. It looks like there's split rail fence in the front, and in the back, it looks like a big cement wall. We just want to really talk about what are we left with in the end. So that's where we stand, and I hope we can find common ground, but we really are hoping that it's not 24/7, because we feel, and we have been told, that Walgreens has been turned down for 24/7, and that if we set the precedent, or if you set the precedent of letting them be 24/7, then Walgreens can come back and say, "They want to be 24/7." And, you know, is this a domino effect? And can their lighting go up? Because these guys have so much lighting. So these are things we're all talking about, exploring, and looking at, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diana. Would anyone else like to speak about any item that is not specifically on tonight's agenda? Is that a yes?
Good evening. I'm Mark Simon, representing 604 Elm, and I fully recognize there are two sides to every story. And I just wanted to share a photograph, and it was something that I shared with President Demos. I think it's worth sharing as a visual, because I thought about it deeply for the last two weeks. I was on North Avenue filling up my car on a rainy day, and I looked down, and I was standing in this. Could you? Thanks, Stacy. I'll keep it short and sweet. But this is, untouched, but, you know, across the entire parking lot of Speedway on North Avenue was this. And I was standing in it, and I thought to myself, "This is not what I want kids walking near or through, or potentially rolling into my backyard or any of the yards on Elm. I don't want it going into a retention pond. This is uncomfortably too close." So I just wanted to share that visual. And then the other comment that I wanted to make, and again, I understand in civics, things evolve over time, is that when Mark Pefferman was president, I stood here with concerns about the parcel of land that has the trees on it being changed from a residential zone into a commercial zone. And I know that was many years back, and maybe this was the vision of someone at the time, but I guess, as I think back on that idea of a residential property being converted into a business zone, that maybe whoever developed our area had the foresight to think that this should be a residential property. I understand how things evolve, but still, to think that that buffer of trees, which was at one time considered residential zoned, could then be decimated and replaced with a large business, it conflicts with what its original intended purpose was. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda as published. It's on the screen. There's also copies around the room. Would any trustee like to remove any item from today's consent agenda for individual deliberations? Would any trustee like to ask any questions about any item on tonight's consent?
Questions on 2 and 4.
Well, you can lead us off. Start with item 2.
On number 2?
Director Halsberg.
This deals with changes to the plumbing code that will involve grease interceptors in terms of, which are designed to prevent grease, I take it primarily from commercial restaurants, from entering the source system.
Correct. It's a precursor to that. This isn't adopting the actual fog regulations, but it's setting up for the future adoption of that Glenbarb wastewater in the Village of Lombard, and our staff have been working on together to develop.
In the memo that I have, it says, "Staff recommended modifying this new provision to allow dishwasher discharge to bypass the grease interceptors, as previously required by the 2004 Illinois Plumbing Code."
Correct.
Or...
Yes.
To require larger grease interceptors, which would allow the fog, which is fat, oil, and grease, to cool down and be collected prior to entering the wastewater system.
Correct.
Which of the two?
It's actually, the choice is of the, let's say it's a restaurant. It's the choice of the business owner. So if their existing grease trap is greater than 500 gallons, then they have, they can actually put, they can connect their dishwasher into their existing system, because it's large enough to accommodate it and allow for the change in temperature. If it's less than 500, then what we're suggesting is they be allowed to go with the lesser requirement that was back in the 2004 code, which says they can bypass. So it's actually, they get a choice, and it's more advantageous the way we're recommending it.
If, what would apply to new construction or new modifications? Would they still have the choice if they were new?
New is going to have to comply with the new fog regulations, which we have not yet proposed before the Board.
Right. But that's likely, as I understand from what I read, that's likely to be part of the proposal going forward.
Right. So, but the changes that we are making here is, so right now, the plumbing code requires that, and this might get very technical, 50 to 60 percent of the capacity of those plumbing fixtures that are going to flow into the grease interceptor, it's sized based on that. And if the sizing is greater than that 500, then they'll have to connect, and if not, they can go around it.
If it's greater than that, it's mandatory that they do connect.
Yes, but it's not an additional sizing requirement for them.
If it's less than that, they have the discretion of whether they want to connect or bypass.
Yes.
Bypassing is what everybody is doing right now.
Has been doing from the 2004 code, but we've actually been required by state law. As soon as the 2014 plumbing code became effective by the state, we've had to follow that, even though we haven't adopted it. So since about 2014, we've been using the new requirements. This will actually make it more flexible than what we're currently applying.
Okay. Then on number 4.
That's a public works item?
That's the water tower?
Yes.
All right. The, I note that the recoding that's recommended, or that's going to be provided as part of this agreement, goes every, sorry, six to 10 years?
I believe that's correct.
Is that, what is the coating that's used?
That I'll have to refer to the Utilities Division Superintendent, who's worked on this agreement, as far as the specification goes for the paint?
Yeah, for the coating.
The type of paint?
The interior coating.
Interior or exterior?
Interior.
Interior?
Interior.
Interior, we follow the AWWA specs.
Right. So I take it that's either wax grease, or what is it? It's a polymer coating?
Yeah, it's a polymer coating typically, and then...
There's a third one.
Yeah. We follow the specs through the AWWA. I don't know what was off the top of my head, but just to clarify, on the inside, it's a little bit longer, it's about 10 to 12 years. The outside, it's about eight to 10.
Yeah. Do you know whether the 10 to 12 years is what the AWWA recommends?
I believe that is right around what they're recommending, because the basis for this maintenance program is to follow best practices.
The agreement that is being considered, will it comply? Will the contractor be required to comply with all the AWWA guidelines with respective inspection and coating?
Yes. We have to get IEPA permits when we recoat the tank, and so that, those are the requirements that we have to follow for doing.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that that contract's going to say they're going to comply with the AWWA.
I can look at that. I don't know if it says it specifically, that it's the AWWA, but it's set up to follow those AWWA specs. I can look into the contract and find that. I have a copy of it with me here. So I can look at that and get you an answer very shortly.
That would be great.
All right. That's all I have.
Yeah, if it does not, we can certainly have that. I'm sure they would agree to that.
It should.
Yeah, I'm sure it does. Anything else?
Julius, while you're up there, this contractor out of Perry, Georgia, I recognize their name from before. We haven't had any issue with them on doing any other work. They've notified residents. They didn't, Sam Blassey gets stuff all over the cars in the neighborhood.
No, I think that they've done an excellent job, from my understanding.
They have done a good job, and they've worked well with us, both with issues with the residents around the tanks and with working with the contract. So in the contract that we do have signed, they follow the procedures as outlined in AWWA D-102 specifications for cleaning and coating of portable water tanks.
Okay.
So...
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
There you go.
I have one more quick question, but Stacy, could you come back to the electron? On the plumbing code?
Yes.
It mentions that we would adopt the water sense, or, where is it?
It's the water sense for the IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
Correct. Can we carve that out, that requirement?
I wish we could.
That plumbing, what?
I wish we could.
You know, years ago, again, these government entities that get involved in stuff they shouldn't, you know, decided, you know, how much water should flush down a toilet, and it didn't work. So then they had to go back and change it, and, you know, that's still a complaint, but...
That was my suggestion, because, I guess, well, I shouldn't have an opinion, but I'm not a fan. So what we did do, though, was we eliminated part of the regulation that they had suggested for the code, that actually identified the flow rates that go through there. So should there be changes to the flow rates at the state level? We don't have to go back and ask for an amendment to our code from the state, and then also amend our regulations. But that is not something we're able to opt out of.
Okay. I guessed not. Again, it's one of those, you know, government overreach things. People pay for water, and if they want to pay for more so they can shower better. But thanks for answering my question.
May I, I'd like to remove number 2 from the consent agenda.
We'll remove number 2 for, we'll take it up after we're done with the consent. Are there any questions on any remaining items? May I have a motion to approve item 1 and item 3 through 5, please?
Mr. President, I move to approve item 1 and 3 through 5 on the consent agenda.
Second. Second. Any further deliberations? Are there any public comments on the consent agenda? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Sonnack.
Aye.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Lattisak.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Wonderful. We'll readdress item 2. Director Halsberg? Gives us a little more latitude for discussion.
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Oh, okay.
You know, I heard what I needed to hear.
Okay.
I think maybe people may want to vote differently than the entire consent. Do we have any other thoughts, Pete, or deliberations?
No.
It's impossible to remove that one item. Stacy?
As far as I know...
So we either adopt it, or we don't adopt it. With no further questions, are any public comments on item 2? May I have a roll call, please? Oh, actually, I need a motion.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move passage of ordinance number 6488 VC, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the plumbing code of Title 4 Building Regulations and Chapter 10 Water System Regulations of Title 7 Health and Sanitation of the Village Code to amend and adopt the 2014 Illinois State Plumbing Code to update local ordinances, to be consistent with the new water allocation rules promulgated by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and to reduce the amount of fog that enters the village's wastewater system.
Second. Second. Any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Lattisak.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee Sonnack.
Nay.
We'll move down to item F. Rich?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. President and members of the Board. I have for your consideration this evening, a very exciting project for the village. It's to move forward with preliminary architectural design and Phase 1 engineering services for improvements to the Glen Allen Metra train station. This project will include the incorporation of a grade-separated pedestrian crossing, as well as reconstruction or renovation of the Metra train station. Just want to begin by stating, CDM Smith is the firm that we are recommending approval of the agreement with this evening. Chris Martel of CDM Smith is here to answer any specific questions in regards to their proposal. This was previously discussed at the February 27 Village Board Workshop Meeting, and a lot of the information that's contained within the memo has been previously discussed with the Board. I just want to bring you up to speed on a couple of developments. We have revisited the scope of services with CDM Smith to include full grant application services within the project's scope of services and tasks. This was based on the fact that CDM Smith's initial proposal only included some basic assistance with grant application funding opportunities. More specifically, CDM Smith has revised their scope, adding about 119 hours to include full application services for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement, grant funding, surface transportation program grant funding, and the Illinois Commerce Commission Crossing Safety Improvement Program funding. Based on that, the fee, CDM Smith's fee proposal increased by about $16,000. The agreement that we are proposing between the village and CDM Smith is a not-to-exceed agreement, in that we will only be billed for the actual services that are rendered for the assignment, so we can, you know, continue to evaluate the scope of services and fees for the grant applications moving forward. The Village Board asked us to take a look at revising the schedule for the project to try to expedite the assignment as soon as possible. CDM Smith did revisit the schedule, and while they were able to move, remove some of the combined commission meetings, they feel that the schedule that has been presented is reasonable, and CDM Smith does not feel that they can expedite the schedule beyond completing it in advance of 12 months, and that's assuming that the assignment would go seamlessly. As such, the schedule that was provided within the agenda packet for the meeting this evening shows the services to commence in April of 2017, with Phase 1 anticipated to be completed by March of 2018. Grant applications would anticipate to be completed as those funding opportunities come about, and we anticipate that the next calling for the CMAT grant application would be in March of 2019. So services would continue through March of 2019. In terms of the process, an RFP was issued in late October of 2016. The village received seven proposals for the assignment. Staff went through and evaluated the proposals, formed a selection committee that consisted of both staff and elected officials. Three firms were interviewed for the assignment. Based on the interviews and the preliminary evaluations, CDM Smith was identified as the firm with the most favorable proposal in the interest of the village. Again, we are recommending a not-to-exceed contract in the amount of $232,375, which will be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund. The village did provide $250,000 within the 2017 budget for the assignment. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I just have one question. I see they did cut back some of the schedule, and I'm still curious about the surveys and online surveys. What are they looking to get? What feedback, and from whom?
Part of the process that we're recommending is to try to get public input early on in the project, in utilizing an online survey such as Survey Monkey, or passing out surveys at the actual train station, just to solicit some early input. I know that there's been some discussions at the workshop meeting in regards to whether or not we should be evaluating a pedestrian bridge and an underpass as part of the Phase 1 assignment, and that would be a good opportunity to use that survey to get that input, at least from the public, see what their thoughts are on it, as well as any other...
Didn't we agree to do both in Phase 1?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we agree to do both in Phase 1 already?
Correct.
So why would we, the public, because we were doing both, so why get public opinion now?
We would get some public input early on in the process. We have to finalize as part of Phase 1 if we're going to go bridge or underpass.
Within Phase 1, or after Phase 1?
Within Phase 1. The Phase 1, the scope of services, the Phase 1 report that we get from IDOT, that we submit to IDOT, and when we get approval for it, it's going to define whether we go with a bridge or an underpass. And CDM Smith's assignment, if you will, is going to take a look at both of the alternatives, but when we start getting into the detailed analysis, we're going to want to have an idea of which direction we're going in. And as part of the decision-making process, we feel that a survey, that'd be one of the many things that we would ask the users of the train station in terms of what they feel they would like to see incorporated into the project, among other improvements as well.
So along with Trustee O'Shea's questions on that, though, it will not, I know on the schedule it says 30 days or one whole month, but you're not really allocating an entire month to it. You're also doing other things, correct?
Correct. It's not...
You're not holding it up.
It's not a controlling item, in other words, and we plan to, just to be clear, we plan to form a work group, and when we have the initial kickoff with CDM Smith, we want to discuss what the specific schedule is, what the controlling items are, and make sure that we get, you know, early input from the Board to keep the project moving forward as efficiently as possible.
I guess I just worry when you go to an online survey and you're asking people for their wish list, who's going to pare that wish list down to what we really have in terms of our means to be able to build and afford? Obviously, everyone's going to ask for the world. They're going to want the best of everything, but when does that get pared down, and who's going to be responsible for paring that down so that CD Smith has a clear vision going forward, and we're not, you know, we're not having scope creep like we seem to have so many times in these big projects, and nothing moves?
The work group will be the first layer to review those things. We're contemplating having a couple trustees sit on that work group, like they did with the interview process, and then we can have some check-in points with the Board at workshops throughout to make sure that we're heading in the right direction, and some decisions are made on the fly, so we can keep the project moving.
Have we considered providing a budget before this begins of how much money is the village itself is willing to pay towards this project?
I think that's putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to know what some of the design ideas are, and work through this process to a point, and that could be a check-in point with the Board, too, and kind of evaluate what that impact is going to be. But we really haven't done any real research on this yet. That's why we wanted to hire some design professionals to figure out, you know, what the basic costs are going to be first, before we make that decision.
So my concern gets back to what happened with the PlayStation. It's, you know, several months, if not longer, was spent on designing, and then the Board was not comfortable with any of those costs. And then the Board came back and said, "We're comfortable with this amount of money," and then it went back, and then redesigned. So I was hoping to avoid that conflict again, and I don't know if the fellow Board members up here agree of, not saying not to exceed, but about, this is what we're comfortable with, because from what I've seen, there's a wide range of possibilities, from $1 million to $15 million.
Depends upon the grants, though, right?
Well, that would, but yes and no, because if the grants, I think at most, unless I'm mixing this up with another project, wouldn't cover more than 60%, correct?
Could go up to 80.
Yeah, somewhere between 60 and 80 is a different range. There's 60% grant, 70% grant, it's 80%.
So I mean, is the village really going to be willing to kick in $15 million if it's a $30 million project? Or would we still say no, even if it's being covered 60 or 80%? Or would the village say, "No, we just don't, you know, that's not the type of project that we want to spend $15 million on"?
I think that's what, a part of this is going to flush out, is a person that's involved in that subcommittee, and we do have a representative from CDM Smith there, if he is allowed to answer any of these questions better than myself, but in order to drill down on that phase 1, like with the vehicular under overpass, we did a feasibility study. And through the feasibility study, we said, "It's feasible, okay? Then we got to move on to shooting grades, and then determine, you know, what makes sense."
Wait, that was four years ago?
Yeah.
Just making sure that... Just making sure that we're on the same page.
We're on the same side of the, of the debate there, but, and we're hoping to try to speed this up, but in order to get to that next step and see what, what that would cost, in, in some of the initial discussions we had, everybody was like, "Let's just go to the bridge," because the underpass was just completely cost prohibitive, but with, with CDM Smith and, and some of the projects that they've worked on, they said, "There's some technology and some ways to design this where the underpass might be, might cost a little bit more upfront, but it's going to be there for longer. You're not going to have all the, the other, the other maintenance issues like with the elevators and that type of thing."
Yep.
So, but I, I see this as, again, the stepping stone, kind of along with, with Mitch Friend said, that to get to that next point, so we really, so we really know these are real numbers, which is, you know, early on with the police department, they told us it'd be a 33 or 34 million dollar building, and then we said, you know, "There's no way."
Right.
But then when we engaged the, when we engaged the design bill contractor a little bit more, then they massaged that number down to here, to a number where we said, "Okay, now we know what you can do for closer to our budget, you know, range. Here's our budget. Here's the world, here's what we can spend."
And I hear what you're saying, and I'm not concerned about the underpass/overpass project part of it, because it is what it is. And that's, you know, there's, there's not much flexibility in there, except for you pick a design based on, on, on the requirements. It's, it's the metro station itself, because there are so many different possibilities that...
Hang on, Dean's phone.
Take, you can take that.
There's some clicking over here. Could you speak up?
An interest in keeping it moving. I, I just wanted to see if anybody else, I, you know, for just the metro station itself, I know I myself am not comfortable with renovating it at 15 million dollars.
Right, and that's, and the metro station is not 15 million dollar, a 15 million dollar component. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's a few million dollar component.
No, but a station was 13.
But if you, well, if it gets torn down and the tunnel goes into it, then it becomes a, a critical part of that redevelopment, then yes, but if it's a bridge, then we may be able to leave the structure there or the foundation and then take the roof off of it, you know, tie, you know, add a, what do you call it, the, the extension of the train station platform, you know, a covered platform and that type of thing. And again, I think this is just going to get us, you know, this, this is the next step to get us to where we can see some real numbers to determine, is this something that we can afford?
I, I agree with you, Diane, I, but I do think that getting this project started and, and staying in touch and having two trustees on the committee and reporting back, that there will be appropriate time to mold exactly what you're saying, because you don't want to go to the full year, we'd be presented something that you absolutely won't want to consider, and, and I think that there's most certainly congeniality to, to be fluid here. So I, I'd encourage moving forward and getting the information.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just getting, because this is a fixed sum, and we're going to get the information, and we're going to end up in a position with something that the board wants to move forward with, and it's most certainly...
Absolutely, good. It, it's not something that would, I would vote to stop this. I'd just input into it as hopefully it passes to me.
Well, you'll be in a great position to input into it. Are there any trustee, any other questions?
Just a couple. What other communities have constructed a similar structure?
Chris, do you want to come up and comment on that? Just...
When you say similar structure, you're talking underpass or overpass?
Underpass or overpass, or whatever we're planning on doing. Has it been done by someone in this area?
In this area? Actually, I'm the wrong person. I wish I brought my project manager now. There are multiple stations along the, the west line that have similar structures, but again, are you saying tunnel? I mean, the Lombard and, and, and other places in Metro have...
Winfield.
Bellwood, Elmhurst came up.
Winfield.
Yeah, I mean Elmhurst is building, well Elmhurst has an underpass, they're building another underpass. But are you asking specifically underpass or overpass, or either?
Well, right now, we're considering both.
Yeah.
So I'm interested in finding out who's done this before, so that we might contact them and find out what the implications of doing this would be.
Yeah, and I can...
Stewartsville, Wisconsin, had a, a bridge that they constructed.
Aren't we the last station on our line to even, to look at this? So every station along our line has either under or over.
Well, our immediate neighbors, Wheaton and Lombard, Villa Park is, is rapidly engaged in the process as well. Elmhurst is, is...
To go to the point about what it's going to cost, one might look to their budgets and see what the numbers are, and then we would have some baseline to work with, because I think that's an excellent point by Trustee McGinley on trying to get a fix on what's the, what's the number right now.
There, there's no scarcity of data, and again, we have, the cost estimators have all this stuff, I just don't have it handy, but, but to your point, though, is that when we do the cost estimate, we break it up into pieces, so it's not a question of, well, it's 15 million dollars, where you're going to see that, you know, there's going to be 4 million dollars for the, for the tunnel, there's going to be a million dollars for the platform, there's going to be X million for the station and X million for the, the parking, or whatever it may be, the site improvements. Now, and that's usually where the value engineering occurs, is in those two places, the last two places. The platform, you really don't have a lot of say, because UP does what they need to do, they set the standards and other things, but there's flexibility in the station and, and again, how far out we reach.
Great, thank you for that. I was just worried if we spent too much time on things that we just know we couldn't afford, but I appreciate that feedback.
And it's, again, it's, we talk about Phase One engineering, and that's the IDOT term for Phase One engineering, but in terms of this project, the phases are, I mean, we're going to be coming back to this working group and the board multiple times throughout, so we don't go to the next step until we've gotten concurrence on the direction we're going, because we don't want to waste our time or yours.
And our trustee Kenwood and trustee Lattisack's comfortable in staying on with this workroom?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, so I, I think that's important, Diane, because that'll make sure that the board has the pulse exactly of what's going on. This might be something that you can report into at least once a month or at a workshop and stuff.
Was Mr. Pride over here part of it, or is that just facilities?
No, he actually participated, because he's not a sitting trustee yet, so we kept him, so we'll have to sort that out.
Okay.
So two more questions. I take it as part of what you're going to do, you would not do any type of economic development study to determine what the impact this would have from an economic development standpoint?
No.
I take it as part of what you're doing, you're not going to do any type of safety analysis to determine what the implications of this would be from a safety perspective, whether it will improve safety for the pedestrians crossing the area?
We do.
You do, you, that is part of your analysis?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's the, one of the primary goals of the project.
So, when, would you get back in Phase One, and that's what I'm kind of interested in, well, we'll get back in Phase One, is some assessment of the safety consequences of what's being proposed as both a overpass and underpass?
So it's not necessarily an assessment of your, we've done a preliminary look at your existing facilities, and you have, you know, multiple points of concern, but what we do is design things to avoid, again, there's traffic conflicts, whether it be vehicle-to-vehicle, vehicle-to-pedestrian, we want to make sure that our parking lots don't, so right now, your parking lot's back out into people walking in between the parking stalls, right? So you're, you don't really have a great sidewalk system around there. Some of your sidewalks are very steep, some of the people are going to go in the roads, or they, they have to walk in the roads right now. The crossings don't have a flat enough, smooth enough surfaces to be ADA accessible, so we look at ADA accessibility and, and just pedestrian safety, vehicle safety, and we design things and solve those things.
And this, what you're just describing is going to be part of the Phase One deliverable, I think is the term that I saw.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because Metro, UP, but certainly Metro and IDOT especially care closely that we're designing things per ADA and with pedestrian conflicts.
Will you provide some type of comparison between the pedestrian tunnel and the overpass relative to the safety that either one of those alternatives would provide, which would be a safer alternative for the community?
We can. The, the biggest driver in that decision isn't necessarily the safety. The biggest driver is O and M costs, again, whether it's an exposed overpass, ramps versus stairs, time to get across, elevators, cost, O and M. There's a lot of other functions that tie to the decision between an overpass and underpass, geotechnical, geology considerations, stormwater flooding, the tunnels, humping requirements and so forth. So there's a, so we talked about at the workshop, doing a special workshop early on, so we quickly come to a decision between the overpass and underpass, so we'll look at a lot of different considerations, but, and safety being one, but that's not really the primary driver between the two, because both provide the biggest safety benefit compared to what you have now, which is that people don't have to walk around, they can go under or over the rail crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for letting me throw you under the train. I mean...
The underpass is safer, you won't get a heart attack climbing up 46 stairs.
I defer to your better judgment. Jen?
Any further trustee questions? Are there any public questions or comments on this item? May I have a motion, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve an agreement with CDM Smith of Chicago, Illinois for architectural design and Phase One engineering services for the Glen Allen Metro Train Station and grade-separated pedestrian crossing project in an amount not to exceed $232,375 to be expensed at the capital projects fund.
Second. Second, any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Lattisack.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Sannick.
Aye.
Item G, professional engineer to offer. It's hard for me to say professional engineer in that minute.
Appreciate that.
It's going to take me a little, you know, I, I met you as rich, and I'm going to have to, obviously, you've earned in, and most certainly that title, but Bob, with you in the room, it's hard for me to do that.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like you to briefly go over this, because we went over this in, in the workshop here, so if you can just give a, just a brief presentation here.
Absolutely. I have for your consideration this evening, the approval of a, of a construction contract for the 2017 Kennelworth and Alley Reconstruction Project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors of Schaumburg, Illinois, in the amount of $1,315,000, which includes the village's standard 3% contingency for construction contracts. I want to begin by crediting our senior civil engineer, Tom Topper, who's here this evening, as he completed the design and competitive bidding of this project. It's a, that's a significant effort to do with in-house resources. Engineering firms will put together a team of, of engineers and surveyors to put an assignment like this together, so I just want to credit him on a, on a great job.
Thank you.
The proposed improvements are going to include the reconstruction of Kennelworth Avenue between Greenfield and Hill. Pointing to it on the screen here, it's approximately 1,100 feet of roadway that will be reconstructed with all-new concrete curb gutter and asphalt pavement. As part of our standard reconstruction projects, we'll be putting in new driveway approaches, doing intermittent sidewalk repairs, constructing new storm sewer, replacing sanitary sewer services and water services, and constructing some various water main improvements. We're also proposing to reconstruct three asphalt alleys, the Center Street Alley east of Lorain, the Annandale Park Alley between Duane and Hillside, and then the Chittister Elm Alley east of Lincoln in the northeast corner of the village. The project was competitively bid in late February. We, we had 25 contractors request bid packages. We received and opened eight bids on March 10th. Based on a review of the, the bids, we found that the apparent low bidder, LNR Construction, did not have the appropriate qualifications to complete the assignment, so we are, we have recommended that the village consider award of the assignment to ALAMP Concrete Contractors. The total bid amount without the 3% contingency is $1,274,216.62. We did carefully review all the, the references that were provided by LNR. Again, we just were not convinced that they had the appropriate experience, and therefore we recommend that their bid was found to be not responsible and should be rejected by the village board. ALAMP has performed projects as of recent for the village. In 2015, they completed the Elm Cottage Geneva Connectors Improvements Project. It was approximately 200, 2.5 million dollars in value. That project was successfully completed on time and under budget. Funding has been provided in the capital project sanitary sewer and water fund for this assignment. We do have, there is a slight increase in the capital component, however, we made some adjustments, and we, we have reviewed the bids carefully and ensured that we have received favorable prices for the project. In terms of the construction schedule, if it's awarded, work would commence in April, in late April or early May. The contractor completion date has been set to August 4th, 2017, and restoration would extend beyond that. We're just presenting to you this evening for consideration, award of the construction contract. The construction engineering services award would come in early April. We're going to be releasing, we've released an RFP, and so we're anticipating bringing that agreement forth for overseeing the construction of the project on April 10th. So based on this presentation, staff is recommending rejecting LNR Construction Company's bid for the Kennelworth Alley Reconstruction Project and awarding the project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any trustee questions or comments? Are there any public questions or comments?
I didn't have any questions. I did have one comment. I mentioned in our workshop that I, I have, I've had, I've operated projects in areas where this contractor, that, that maybe awarded this contract tonight, has operated, and I have some concern with that, expressed that to staff, and I trust that you guys, you know, with your oversight, will do that. Some of the concerns I expressed were the composition of the backfill they were using next to sidewalks and particularly behind curbs, so that we're mindful of that, and the topsoil amount, so that when they, when they do put topsoil in, that plants and grasses can, can grow where they're supposed to, but again, I, I trust your oversight and the, the recent experience that we had with them, and we'll take the savings for our residents, so, thank you.
Any additional comments? Any public comment? Trustee O'Shea may have a motion, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to reject the bid received from LNR Construction Company of Chicago, Illinois, for the 2017 Kennelworth Alley Reconstruction Project on the basis that it is a non-responsible bidder for the reasons discussed, and approve award of a construction contract to the next low bidder, ALAMP Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the 2017 Kennelworth Alley Reconstruction Project in the amount of $1,315,000, including a 3% contingency to be expensed to the capital project sanitary sewer and water funds.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Lattisack.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee Sannick.
Aye.
The next item is reminders. Manager Friend.
Next Monday's village board meeting on March 27th is, is canceled. Everyone enjoy a healthy, a, a happy and healthy spring break. The village board meeting is, is, the next, next scheduled meeting is for April 10th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Galligan Boardroom with the Glen Allen Civic Center.
I would, may I have from trustee Kenwood a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Mr. President, trustees, residents of Glen Allen, and staff, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation, setting the price for sale or lease of property and the purchase of real property for the use of the public body without returning to open session thereafter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee O'Shea.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Lattisack.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee Sannick.
Aye.
We're adjourned to executive session, thank you.